You go through extra work. All right. With that, it is seven o'clock, so I'm gonna call the meeting to order, and this is the regular council meeting for Minat- City of Minatrista, October 4th today?
Second.
Second. Trying to move us along a little faster than I should. So first, I'd like to ask that you remind everybody, including ourselves, turn off your electronic devices or put them on airplane mode, or mute, silence, whatever, so that they don't disrupt the proceedings here. And then I'd like to ask that you join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So with that, welcome, everyone. Good to have people here in our audience. First, I'm gonna start with some introductions. I'm gonna start on that side, to my left. At the very end, we have our Public Works Superintendent Gary Peters here this evening. He's in the audience. And then we have Cassandra Tabor is our HR Communications Coordinator. Our city clerk is Chris Lindquist. And then we have Paul Hornby, who is our city engineer with WSB. And then we have council members, Shannon Bruce, Mike Molliter, Pam Mortensen, and Patricia Thol. I'm Lisa Whalen, I'm the mayor. And to my right, we have city administrator Mike Birone. Brian Grimm is our Finance Director. David Abel is our Community Development Director. And then we have our city attorney, Ron Beatty, who is with Kennedy and Graven. And on the end, we have our police, Chief of Police, Paul Falls. With that, I'll move on to approval of our agenda. Is there anything else on the agenda that we need to add or change? Okay? With that, is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Okay, Ms. Bruce got that, and Mr. Molliter seconded that, I believe.
Sure.
All right. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes 5-0. So we're gonna start with some special presentations. First, we have an Eagle Scout presentation from Ethan Livermore. Welcome, Ethan, and thank you for coming. So Ethan did an Eagle Scout project in the city of Minatrista, and I'm gonna let him explain it and give us some background.
Do I have a clicker?
Ah, good question. Just snap your fingers, maybe.
So I did an Eagle project. It was a raised planter in Wild Park. It was turned by twelve by two. In Hunter Crest, the project cost around nineteen fifty, and then the Rotary donated about a thousand dollars of it. And the city helped a lot by getting supplies out there and helping in getting the materials I needed.
Nice.
So this is the location on a map. There's the wider view, more centered, and then that one was like this grass and not just that. So this is before I started it. We met, I met with Gary and David to pawn it out. This is the day one. We're just trying to get the trench done. And then we got a Rotary person right there helping out with that. This is the afternoon where we were, I was learning about how to use the automatic tamper. We were laying, we were testing out how to lay some of the blocks. This is the day two morning. We had my French exchange student there, and then one of our neighbors. So we were trying to level up to class five, making sure it would stand, and we tamped it all down. This is the afternoon where we started laying the first base layer of the block on the class five. This is the day three when the Boy Scouts arrived. We got the campia, so we don't all get baked in the sun. We got one of the scouts there doing the fabric. We got some scouts helping with laying down the block. And then this is after day three. We got the first four, we got all the block laid, just needed to put on the cap. This is the moving day where we moved all the dirt into the raised planter with the fabric around it. And then this is day four. We're putting down the capstone. We're cutting that it. We already had all the dirt laid down from the last day. Then we got the last capstone in on day four from the afternoon.
Looks like you were a little excited.
Hard work.
Yeah, I can imagine.
So this is where we, this flower shop is before we planted all, so we just laid out all the flowers in front to see how it would look. So, and this is day five. Scouts helped with planting the flowers in it. We had the fabric down. We had, we got the grasses and all, everything planted. And then this is what it looked like all done with all of the scouts that helped.
Nice. Now, how did you decide on the plans? Did somebody help you?
Um, yeah, we have a neighbor. She does landscaping for some other people in her job, so we asked her to think about it.
Good, nice. So it was a collaborative effort?
Yep.
So you had the Rotary, and neighbors, and scouts, and city all involved. That's wonderful.
And then this is the day three. She started to help out.
Okay. Wonderful. Thank you. So, round of applause. So, I think Cassandra wants to get a picture.
So if you want to sit here, there are windows coming out. Perfect. Congratulations.
So next, we have another special presentation, and it's with MCWD, I believe, so welcome, Anna Brown.
Yes, quickly, Madam Mayor and Council, just give a quick introduction. This is, I guess, more brief, brief special presentation by MCWD staff. As, as we do every ten years with updating our comprehensive plan, the watershed district does the same thing with their watershed management plan. So they're on, they're on a similar cycle. They've got their draft out for comment and review, and as you'll see in your packet, there is a draft letter of support for their, their plan going out that they're asking the council to sign off on. So with that, I'll turn it over to Anna Brown with Minnehaha Creek Watershed District for a brief overview and answering questions.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, David.
Welcome, Ms. Brown.
Thank you, Mayor Whalen and council. So I am here seeking support for our draft comprehensive plan. I'm here mostly to answer questions, but wanted to also provide a little bit of context about the plan and sort of where we are in the process. I also wanna take the opportunity to extend a huge thank you to Mayor Whalen, who participated in the development of this plan through our Policy Advisory Committee, as well as the Six Mile Halsted Bay Subwatershed Partnership. And also, thank David Abel for participating as well as that Six Mile, on that Six Mile Committee, and also just for the, the high level of coordination that he has really helped facilitate between the district and the city. The district's approach is really all about partnership as memorialized in the plan, and I think the, the work that we've done with the city of Minatrista, and will continue to do moving forward, really embodies that spirit of partnership and coordination, so that we can achieve more than we could sort of working alone in a vacuum. So this plan's been in development for the better part of two years, and marks a really big milestone in the district's evolution as an agency. As many of you are aware, the district has undergone a pretty substantial shift over the last decade, whereas before, we were sort of principally a regulatory agency. Our approach more, our approach now really focuses on partnership and flexibility to, to get our work done. To us, that means seeking opportunities to coordinate with communities and identify ways that we can add value to your local goals and priorities and plans. It means that we really emphasize integration and early coordination with the land use community, so that we can facilitate better natural resource outcomes. And then, of course, it means focusing on high-impact capital projects that really target the watershed's most critical resources. One of the major emphases of this, this new plan, of the, the new comprehensive plan, is to really focus in the areas of high need, including the Six Mile Halsted Base of Watershed, of which the city of Minatrista is a part. And this will be a really major implementation emphasis over the next ten to fifteen years as we implement our comprehensive plan. The project implementation for the Six Mile Halsted Base of Watershed has really been underway through this planning process. Some of the highlights going right now are that we have been recommended for funding through the La Sard Sams Outdoor Heritage Council for our CARP management program, and that'll really seek to address common CARP system-wide from Pearson Lake down by Victoria, all the way through Halsted Bay, which, and you know, common CARP are really one of the principal drivers of degraded habitat through the system, so we're really excited to be, to be recommended for that funding. And then we also have work underway for a, a project that would substantially reduce the phosphorus load going into Halsted Bay through the use of alum in the upstream system. So those are just a few of the opportunities that are happening now. And then, once the plan is adopted, we do intend to continue to use that Six Mile Halsted Bay Subwatershed Committee to help really guide the implementation and make sure that we maintain the high level of coordination that we've had through this two-year process into implementation, so that all of our communities know what we are doing, but also so we know what our communities are doing and can make sure that we are able to respond to new opportunities that are emerging in real time. So a little bit about where we are in the process, and then I can ask questions. We did release the draft plan for sixty-day review, and that, that comment period is officially closed, though we are still, you know, taking comments and still able to respond. During that comment period, we did hold several, several meetings, both for the existing, the existing committees, the Policy Advisory Committee and Technical Advisory Committee, and then also invited council members and staff who weren't part of that formal process to be there. And we were happy to welcome council member Bruce to, to one of those meetings to provide an overview there. We intend to submit the final draft plan for agency review at the end of October, and then we anticipate adoption come December. And then we will quickly move into helping all of our communities develop their, their water management plans that'll be part of their comprehensive plans. So with that, I can, I can answer any questions, and then again, we are seeking support for that, that comp plan here tonight.
All right. Thank you very much. Council, any questions or comments?
Okay, just on the, just wanna, on the language, you say you've been recommended for the funding, funding for that common CARP project. Does that mean you're waiting to hear if you're going to be a recipient of it, of the funding yet, or?
Yes, so the, the La Sard Sams Outdoor Heritage Council is, the funding comes from the legislature. So what the council will do is produce bill language, and then it has to be formally adopted by the legislature during session. So we won't know officially until June of 2018, but they typically adopt the bill as drafted, so we, we anticipate the funding and we're planning accordingly.
Yeah, good. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Good. Yeah, and hopefully that will help Halsted Bay and also Six Mile Creek, so. Any other questions?
The meeting, the meetings were really helpful to go to, especially having other city council members there and listening to their comments and questions. I learned a lot, and I'd highly recommend other council members, when they do this again in the future, going, it was helpful. Thanks.
Yeah, good. Okay. So, the MCWD is looking for a support of a, a letter to support their draft watershed management plan. We did have a copy in our packet, so if you're so inclined, I'd be looking for a motion.
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
Second it.
Okay, motion has been made by Ms. Mortensen, and seconded by Ms. Thol, to, in support of the draft, uh, letter of support that we have in our packet. Any further questions or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify with aye. Aye. All those opposed, motion passes 5-0. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So next, we'll move on to persons to be heard. So we have Tom Sherer, is that correct, or Sherper, thirty-eight? Is that in regards to the assessment? Okay. Is this, are you on the consent agenda for a?
For the, for the permit?
For the, um, I think, right? Variants. Okay. So, take a few minutes, go ahead. Because it's on our consent agenda, so that's okay. We are looking to approve it.
Oh, yeah.
So.
That's why we're here.
Okay. Let me, let me make it easy for you. Unless it's polled and for discussion, it should be approved. So if it's polled for discussion, we'll ask you to make some comments. Would that be easier? Okay, thank you. All right. And then we have Jim Nick, I'm sorry, I can't read all this. Jim?
We have the same situation.
Okay, you're here for an approval. Okay, we'll get to you then, too. And then I have a hardscrabble circle, fifty-eight ninety, also, that's you. Okay. And then I have Scott Qual, Minspect. You can state your name and address for the record. Thank you, Mr. Qual.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My name is Scott Qual, I'm the president of Minspect, working in McConney, and we used to serve as your building official. For twenty-six years, from nineteen eighty-four till two thousand and ten, Minspect was the building official in Minatrista. And then in two thousand and fourteen and two thousand and fifteen, we were asked to come back. There was a request for proposals, and we responded to that proposal, or that proposal was accepted, and we came back to serve the city from two thousand and fourteen until two thousand and fifteen. Copy of the contract is gonna be in the packet that I'm gonna give you. It's twenty pages long. Our contract specifically references Minnesota Statute four seventy-one point four twenty-five, which speaks to local government agencies and how they are supposed to pay invoices. Minnesota law regarding pay, comp payment of local bills. That statute speaks to the idea that the municipality is supposed to pay bills with respect to the terms of the contract, and that they have an opportunity to dispute those bills, but that's supposed to be done within ten days of receipt, and if it's not paid within the terms of the contract, there's supposed to be a Minatrista penalty that is associated with that. We sent an invoice on six, five, fifteen, at three oh four PM. It was received by the city. Mr. Abel responded to that email seventeen days later with a, a letter from Mr. Birone, which is also attached to the packet, indicating that the city was not intending to pay that invoice. In addition, the letter stated, the Minspect was, had an obligation to accurately bill for services rendered, I guess that's in quotes. However, the contract clearly states on page eight, Appendix A, Section Five, that the municipality shall pay to the inspector for services under this contract the following. And it goes on, just enumerate the, the conditions for payment. Under that section, it indicates that general permit fees, like plumbing, mechanical, and maintenance fees, are to be paid at thirty percent with a minimum of fifty dollars. In our invoicing process, we neglected or made an error in that our formula didn't include a minimum of fifty dollars. So we billed, there was a permit issued for thirty-nine dollars. We billed for thirty percent of that, which was approximately thirteen dollars instead of the fifty that was to be in our contract. That error was discovered during an audit of our invoicing process and was invoiced on invoice number sixty-five seventy-six on June fifth of two thousand and fifteen. As the obligation to pay was the city's burden under the contract, if there was an error, I guess it should have been discovered by the city in two thousand and fourteen when we started serving the city, as opposed to waiting for us to find it and then bill. I suspect that if we'd been overbilling, that would have been caught fairly quickly, would be my guess. Abdicating the responsibility to properly track and manage that, and relying on our invoices to be accurate, doesn't mitigate the city's obligation to pay the amount that's due. In Mr. Birone's letter, he also mentioned that the amount was not properly budgeted for. Minspect was paid a fraction of the building permit fees. In fact, our agreement was to charge thirty percent of the permit fees. If we do the math backwards, the idea is that if we were paid two hundred and forty-four thousand dollars, that means the city collected eight hundred and fifteen thousand dollars in building permit fees, meaning that the city retained five hundred and seventy thousand dollars in fees. So the invoice that I've submitted back in June fifth, and have attached here as well for nine four hundred and forty-three dollars, is a very small fraction of the amount that the city retained over its cost to perform inspections. I respectfully request that the city of Minatrista pay Minspect's invoice sixty-five seventy-six, dated six, five of two thousand and fifteen, in the amount of ninety-four hundred and forty-three dollars and sixty, ninety-seven cents, sorry, plus the statutory interest charge through September fifth, in the amount of thirty-eight twenty-four eighty-two, totaling thirteen thousand two hundred and sixty-eight dollars and seventy-nine cents. I understand that this is a public comment period, and that no action would be expected to be taken at tonight's meeting. I would be happy to meet with a subcommittee or committee of the council, provided that they are to discuss or negotiate, provided that they're empowered to make a binding decision at the end of that, the conclusion of that negotiation or discussion.
So, um, let me tell you how this normally works, and you, I'm sure, are aware of that. I think you need to give your information to staff, and we'll have to put this on a work session, because this is a lot of information and a lot of numbers, and a lot of dates, and, and a lot of legal issues. And, um, so we'll, I think we're gonna hand it over to Ron this evening, or, we're not even gonna discuss it tonight, like I said, and make sure that Ron gets a packet. You can review it, Ron. Not tonight, of course, we don't have time for that. And then decide what the next step will be, and we can be in contact with you.
So I'll just briefly summarize what's in here, the contract is the first twenty-five items.
That's okay. We will read this over.
The details, the detailed part of the invoice, the Minnesota statute, and Mr. Birone's wire, that's all that's here.
Okay.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. All right. So that's all the people that are signed up under persons to be heard, and I know others are here for, for the assessment, so you'll have your opportunity later on. So next, we're gonna move on to consent agenda items. I'm going to pull the regular work session meeting minutes from September eighteenth. Otherwise, are there any other consent agenda items you wish to remove?
I'd like to pull F, please.
F is approve side yard and riparian view shed setback variance at fifty-eight ninety hardscrabble circle. So then, we'll pull that off, and then also give the recipient, or the applicants, an opportunity to speak as well. So with that, we have, anything else? With that, we have B, approve our regular meeting minutes from September eighteenth, twenty-seventeen. C is approve our claims. D is approve, or to certify delinquent utilities to twenty-eighteen taxes. E is certify delinquent land use special fees to twenty-eighteen taxes. F has been removed. G is approve a front yard and Lake Shore setback variance at thirty-eight ten Enchanted Lane. H is approve a side yard setback variance at fifty-three sixty Eastview Avenue. I is approve the final payment and accept the twenty-sixteen Water Main project improvements. And J is approve renewal of joint powers agreement with the Bureau of Criminal Apprehension, or the BCA. Is there a, a motion to approve consent agenda B, C, D, E, G, H, I, and J?
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion has been made by Ms. Mortensen, and seconded by Ms. Bruce. Any further questions? All those in favor signify with aye. Aye. All those opposed, motion passes. So first, A is the work session meeting minutes. I just wanted to ask, there's a paragraph there where we had the discussion on the golf cart, and it says that the police will have discretion on enforcing that, and really, we had a discussion saying that if the operator of the vehicle is operating in a safe manner and in a responsible manner, it wouldn't be enforced. So I just want that added, because we were quite clear on that, I believe. So, okay, that's all I had. So.
Madam Mayor, where would you like that put in the?
The regular, it's the work session meeting minutes under golf cart?
I understand that, but where in the?
I knew you'd ask, and I have to get to that page then now.
Do you, you want it after the, there was some discussion on whether to change the ordinance to allow golf carts, and then right before the consensus, or?
Um, there was, go down a little bit more.
There isn't anymore.
I think, okay, there was a, there was a.
Well, the consensus of the council was to leave the ordinance as it is currently written, and let the police use their discretion, so you want me to put it there?
Yes, exactly. Thank you. Yeah. And that was the discussion, I just wanna clarify that.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Is that okay with the council, then? All right. Then I'll make a motion to approve the work session meeting minutes with that change. Is there a second?
Second it.
Okay, Ms. Thol seconded that. All those in favor signify with aye. Aye. All those opposed, motion passes 5-0. So now we'll move on to number F, and that's approval of the side yard and riparian view shed setback variance for fifty-eight, I'm sorry, yeah, fifty-eight ninety hardscrabble circle. Ms., yeah?
Yeah, and I, I don't have any problem with approving the variance. The question that I had is, how, how much are the variance fees when, for this particular variance?
To apply for a variance?
Yeah, for the riparian view shed.
Well, it's a variance, it doesn't matter if it's side yard or what it is, a variance is a variance, and it's a three hundred dollar application fee and a three hundred dollar deposit.
Okay. And what, this situation is, is sort of unique, in that this house was purchased, and when they purchased this house, did they purchase it before or after that neighbor to the south moved their house back?
That might be something the applicant can do.
I don't know what specific timeline, I don't know the specific timeline.
Because it, it seems to me that even, what, what I'm curious about is, I'm, I'd like to suggest that we waive the variance fee for this, because this house was built in nineteen seventy-five, and the owners did absolutely nothing. Their, their house was brought into non-compliance with our ordinance based on what their neighbor did, and it just seems sort of like an absurd situation to make somebody pay for a variance that, when their whole house is in non-compliance, and anything that they do based on their neighbor moving their house back has put their house in non-compliance with our ordinance. So I'd like to suggest that we waive the variance fees for this. It just, it, this just seems unreasonable to ask people to apply for a variance under conditions like this.
Maybe you can weigh in. I mean, we, we get these all the time, so it's.
Right. Nonetheless, I mean, in order to process their request, we'd have to produce it as a, as a variance. In terms of wa- waiving fee, I mean, that's, that's a policy discussion that you as a council would have to make, that, that determination, that, that finding. Past, I can just say, you know, from past practice, it hasn't been done before, but again, that's a policy discussion amongst council that you'd have to discuss. Every, every situation, just remember, every situation's gonna be a little bit different and, and unique in different ways. There are two other variances on, on the application.
Right, yeah. I, I would suggest that, especially tonight, because we don't have all of the information in front of us, that, I'm sure they're looking for approval of this. I think if, if the council wants to, under certain circumstances, waive fees for variances or any other application, we need to then have a policy in place for that, because as Mr. Abel pointed out, it would be rather unfair for the other applicants that had to pay that.
Well, and the, the reason I ask is because this house was built in nineteen seventy-five, and in nineteen seventy-five, it was, it, my understanding, it was in compliance with our ordinance, but it, when this house next door moved, the entire house became, they would have to get a riparian view shed variance on virtually anything that they did, anything. And I think this just speaks to this riparian view shed ordinance. It's been a problem in the past. It's a problem now, and I think it's gonna be a problem in the future. And as, as Mr. Falls stated, we can choose when we enforce ordinances, just like the golf cart ordinance, when we enforce ordinances and when we don't. And I think this is a situation that is unreasonable to ask people to pay a variance fee, especially hundreds of dollars, for something that is, just seems ridiculous to me.
And Mr. Abel, it wasn't just the riparian view shed, wasn't there a side yard?
There was a side yard.
A side yard variance as well? It's not the riparian view shed that. that was the only thing that triggered the variance. It was a side yard as well.
But it's the riparian view shed ordinance that makes anything that they do to the home.
There's a side yard from 15 to 12. What they're requesting as well. They're gonna bolster to the side.
Okay. So how much are they paying in variance fees?
$300 and a $300 deposit.
So $600.
No, we only charge them for the one. If there's multiple variances, we just charge them for the one fee.
And they would have had to apply for the side yard variance regardless of the view shed ordinance. That's what I'm getting at. So the view shed ordinance doesn't solely come into place. They'd have to apply for the side yard variance as well.
Okay. Well, the request says it's a required riparian view shed setback.
It's two.
There's two variances.
Okay.
Yeah. And there were two other applicants on our agenda this evening, also for side yard setbacks. And they had to pay their fees. So I'm reluctant to say some can and some do and some don't have to pay.
And, and that's fine with the other setback if that's a legitimate variance that they would have to apply for. I was just concerned about the riparian view shed triggering all this.
Sure. And that's something would be, again, that would be a policy issue that would have to be discussed in more detail. So, all right.
And just to add, we have a number of homes in Minnetrista, especially over there like off of Tuxedo. I forget, there was one just recently where the side yard setbacks are like six feet or whatever, where we've, we've made a number, we've granted a number of variances on homes that don't meet the current qualifications. And, but yet, it requires a variance. And so that would be somewhat similar to theirs. But I understand, you know, questioning, questioning some of the riparian view shed, that piece of it.
Okay. So we are looking to approve.
Yes.
So I just don't want to make them fearful. So is there a motion then to approve the side yard and riparian view shed setback variance for 5890 Hardscrabble Circle?
So moved.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Any further questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes. So all of you have your variances approved. So, thank you. And next, we have public hearings. And our first public hearing is a temporary one-day on-sale liquor license for the Mound West Tonka Rotary. Ms. Linguist?
Madam Mayor, members of the council. The Mound West Tonka Rotary submitted an application this year again to host their Tonka Brew Fest fundraising event that will be held on November 4th from 3:00 to 6:00 at Galewood Farms. This is very similar to what they did last year. They have been supported by the city in the past. And once again, is a sponsor, we are a sponsor of the event. And in previous years, council has waived the fee for this event. And staff is recommending that the council do the same again this year. The city did publish, post, and mail notices to neighbors within 500 feet. And as of today, there, we have received no comments regarding this request. Staff is recommending approval of this one-day temporary on-sale liquor license to the Mound West Tonka Rotary for its annual Tonka Brew Fest fundraising event to be held on Saturday, November 4th at Galewoods with the conditions stated in the staff report and to waive the application fee of $40.
Okay. Thank you. So I'll start out. Any questions of staff? Otherwise, I'm going to open the public hearing right now. The public hearing is now open. If anybody wishes to comment for or against this application for one-day on-sale liquor license for the Mound West Tonka Rotary, you may do so at this time. Okay, nobody's here for that. So I will close that public hearing and take it back to the council. What is your pleasure? I'm looking for a motion to approve a temporary one-day intoxicating liquor license for the event of the Tonka Brew Fest on November 4th at the Galewoods Farm on County Road 110 West. And this was, would be for the West Tonka Rotary. So moved. Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second then.
Okay. A motion has been made by Ms. Thol and seconded by Ms. Mortensen. Any further questions or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes 5-0. Okay. Thank you. So now we'll move on to our second public hearing, and this is the one you've all been waiting for. So this is our proposed assessments for the Enchanted Lane and Tuxedo Road Improvement Project. We'll start with Mr. Hornby.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. I do have a presentation to go through. There also is a council memorandum for the council and the resolution for consideration of approval of your packet. So this is the assessment hearing for the Enchanted Lane-Tuxedo Road Improvement Project. The project location is along the red line. It's essentially Tuxedo Road and Enchanted Lane between mound and the city of Shorewood, except for the bridge, we're not doing anything with the bridge. The Enchanted Lane street section, this is what we call a typical section. And a good part of the roadway tips from landside to lakeside. And so there are some areas where it actually goes both directions, but the typical section is that drains toward the lake, which we plan to keep the roadway going and draining the same directions it does today. Tuxedo Road, this one would be restoring the crown. It's mostly was a crowned road at some point, and we'd restore that crown in the roadway. The Batunus pavement reclamation and reconstruction to existing pavement width varies from 16 to 22 feet along the length of the two roadways. A little more narrow in some locations. We don't plan to expand the roadway but to put the road back essentially as it is. Street with, if there are areas that we can widen it, such as where we do have right-of-way, we would do that. Street grades are proposed to be maintained. We're going to maintain the existing drainage patterns. We're going to replace covets that have been either inoperable or not operating very well over the past several years. And we'll make minor adjustments to some of the existing roadway vertical profiles or the height of the road to improve drainage and minor seasonal flooding where is possible. The total estimated project cost is $832,235.60. That is the amount of the improvement bonds the city had a sale out of the last two meetings ago. And the special assessments from the preliminary design report is $400,750, and that remains proposed for the final assessment as well. And that is approximately 48% of the project cost. When I say project costs, that does not include the shoreline protection that was brought, that was taken out of, that was in the preliminary design report, that was taken out because of all the permitting. We would have been sitting about a year out on permitting for that. So that should be a separate project. Would we want to go forward with that?
And then the residents won't be assessed for that?
No, in the preliminary design report, that was not included as part of the assessable amount. And then what had been added in since the preliminary report, which also was not identified in the assessable amount, was the improvements around Douglas Park and the milling and overlaying of the boat launch.
So those are not being assessed to the residents as well?
Correct. Those were not considered as part of the assessable amount.
Okay. And Douglas Park is actually being assessed on this assessment rolls?
Essentially, it is because it's a city parcel and the city has two parcels that are being assessed.
Right. So the res-, again, the residents aren't paying for those. So I just, yeah, okay.
So the assessment map, there is, we had, I'm sorry, I'm going to count the parcels. We had the preliminary assessment roll at the, with the feasibility report was $6,463.71 per parcel. And there was a per unit, but same terminology. The city does have two parcels. Those are Parcel 6 and Parcel 2. 2 is Douglas Park. And then I'd have to look at where 6 is on the bigger map. The city council, if you wanted to consider removing any parcels from the assessment roll in looking at three parcels. Parcel 1 is owned by Visser. Parcel 3 by Finley. And Parcel 22 is Tebow. Those are all located on side streets. In the preliminary design report, we didn't know if we were going to have to wrap around the corner to match Batunus roadways and incorporate those lots in. As it turns out from the design, we didn't. I know the city's policy is not to assess properties for two roadways, but these might be better served being assessed with our roadways when those reconstructed or reclaimed.
Their driveways open up onto, do not open up onto Enchanted Lane?
Correct.
Okay. So it would be, it would seem to make sense to assess them for a street project that's on there?
Yeah, unless those owners wanted to be assessed because it might be cheaper now than in the future. Then that'd be the only consideration if you're being assessed.
Didn't we do that on Highland? There's like two corner properties. One had their driveway on Highland, one headed on Halsted.
Correct. So the one on Halsted was not assessed until the Halsted project went. The one that had the driveway out on Highland was assessed with the Highland project.
Okay. So this would be the same scenario?
Correct.
Okay. And then Paul, can I just, one other clarification, maybe more for people here or the audience. When we remove these three parcels, if the council decides to, they're not added to the other properties. The city picks those up, correct?
Correct. Yeah, the assessment wouldn't change. It's just those three parcels would drop out.
Okay. Thank you.
So the assessable amount essentially would change by those three assessments.
Okay. Thank you.
So for our special assessments, the assessment process does follow Minnesota State Statute, Chapter 429, for public improvements. Written objection to appeal must be presented in writing and signed by the property owner prior to or at the hearing. Now, the city council should have loosely fetched your, at the dais, one objection that we received from one property owner. And I think you were handed that just prior to the meeting.
From Mr. Tom Zitzman and Deb Keller?
Correct.
Okay. So we do have their formal objection?
Correct.
Okay. Staff, did you get the, okay, thank you.
And to appeal the assessments, the owners need to serve the mayor or the clerk within 30 days of the adoption of the assessment. And then to appeal the assessments, the owners must file the appeal in district court within 10 days of service to the mayor or the clerk. Interest rate is set at the time of the assessment certification should be tonight, and the assessment rate, in this case, with the bond sales, 4.60%. The first installment would be payable on or before the first Monday in January 2018. The assessments are paid over a 20-year term. Again, the assessment rate is there. The city does allow, by statute, does allow the assessment to be paid off in full to avoid interest. But the city also does allow partial payments that would also have interest bearing on the remaining amount over the term. And it is a, assessment is applied directly to the property tax over that 20-year term.
That is, none of those prepayment options are elected or whatever?
Yes.
And as you had in order there, it's 30 days from the adoption of the assessment rule to pay interest-free if you pay it within that 30-day.
Yes.
On the calendar or whatever.
The assessment payment schedule is from 2018 through 2037. Shows the principal and interest payments with county service fee are approximately $672.57 that the, at the first year and $340.55 the last year. Total amount would be $9,685 for the $6,464 assessment.
That's if that's paid out.
Over the life?
That's over the paid out, over the life to the head of the county with the property tax. And if they elect to let it ride the whole time. And then you can see there, it's the equal principal declining interest method is what we use for our assessments, so.
Tonight is the assessment hearing. This is from the preliminary project schedule on October 2nd. The construction actually started on Monday briefly, or Friday briefly, with relocation of mailboxes. Not all mailboxes were relocated. The ones that looked like they would interfere with the construction. So for people who still have their mailbox in front of their home, mail should still be delivered to that mailbox. Those who don't have a mailbox in one of their homes, the mailboxes were relocated to Soul Grove Road just west of Tuxedo. Contractor does plan to be back when it stops raining. Assessments would be certified to the county in November 2017. Construction should also be completed by the middle of November 2017.
That's the plan?
Correct.
Okay.
Ms. Thap, do you have any questions of me?
Counsel, any questions? So maybe I should ask the counsel first to, are we in favor of removing number, parcels number 1, number 3, and number 22? That would be Visser, Finley, and Tebow. I think our past practice has been not to assess people on the corner if their driveway doesn't access the road that's being assessed. It can get confusing because then if we do the other roads at some point in time, do we remember who was assessed? Are they supposed to be assessed or not? It just seems like that's been our past practice and that would be the fair way to go.
Do you want to do that now?
I was going to say, why don't we do that now? If there's anybody here, Finley, or, or, then they might kind of be able to not have to get up and speak if they don't want to. So I'd be looking for a motion to remove parcels 1, 3, and 22, respectively Visser, Finley, and Tebow from the assessment roll.
And that's on the basis that the driveways do not access the impacted road?
Right, and yes.
Okay.
And their addresses are actually the other roads as well. Let me just double check. I'm pretty sure. Yeah. Wesley?
I think it's more Paul said that he thought it would maybe affect their property, but it didn't have to wrap around. So they're really not in the scope of the project. It's the way I almost would interpret that.
Right, right.
Correct. And I think for future, with the policy remaining the same, is that when the side streets are reclaimed or reconstructed, that that assessment would be applied and we'd go back to review this assessment at that time.
Right.
To see who was assessed. I think it was on Parcel 3, they're actually, they are actually addressed on Tuxedo.
Yes.
But the way the parcel is set, the driveway actually appears to be on Soul Grove.
Yep.
Or St. Mary's.
St. Mary's, I think. Okay.
These three parcels, they have other ways to get out of their neighborhood than going?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah. Well, yeah, I mean, you'd have to look at a math, but actually, anybody out there on the island has to eventually get out to Tuxedo and take Tuxedo. I mean, there's just no way of getting around that.
Is there a motion on the table?
No, not yet. I'm waiting for one.
I, I'll move to take them off.
All right. Thank you. A motion has been made by Ms. Bruce to remove parcels 1, number 1, number 3, and number 22. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Are there any further questions, discussion?
I just want to say, this has been our past practice, so I agree.
Yeah. Correct. Okay. Okay. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes five oh. Okay, now, any other questions of staff? I'm also gonna briefly, before I open it up for the public hearing, Mr. Beatty, can you give us a brief synopsis of the legal process and rights? I just wanna make sure that the residents are clear on what they need to do.
Yes, Madam Mayor, council. And this is a repeat of what the city engineer said a few minutes ago and what was in the letter that you received with regard to tonight's hearing. In order to be able to appeal an assessment, there really are three steps. The first is submitting a written objection. That has to be done either before tonight's meeting or before the council votes on the assessment, which is likely to occur after the close of the hearing. The objection has to be in writing, but it can be simply, as simple as stating your name, address, and that you object to the assessment. That simply preserves your right to appeal. The second step, as the slide showed, was actually filing a lawsuit. You need to serve the mayor and clerk with a lawsuit within thirty days of the adoption of the assessment rule, again presuming that's tonight. You've got a month to do that. And then within ten days after serving the mayor or the clerk, then you need to file those papers with district court, Hennepin County District Court. So it's a three-step process, but in order to be able to take any of those other steps, it's important that a written objection be filed prior to the council's action tonight.
Thank you. Okay. Any other questions or comments otherwise? I'm gonna open it up for public comment or remarks. Okay, I'm gonna open up the public hearing. The public hearing is open. If you're here, you'd like to make some comments or objections, I need you to come to the podium, state your name and address for the record. Who wants to go first?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Carrie Alstrom. We are the owners of the property at thirty-five fifteen Tuxedo Road and also owners of the property at three four sixty-five Tuxedo Road.
Okay.
Just kinda wanna piggyback, it's kinda similar to the Tebow property. The address is Tuxedo, however, the driveway at thirty-four sixty-five exit on, exits, or the access is on Edsel Road. That property is also, there is no home located there. There's only a garage.
Okay, is it an unbuildable lot?
No, it is buildable. It's just, that's the way the property is and, you know, you would, you know, potentially seek to get that removed from the rolls.
So that's on Tuxedo, but the driveway is on Edsel?
Yeah, very similar by, very similar to Tebow. Where most of his driveway is on Edsel.
Right, right. David, can you pick, bring up a map?
I'm working on that, Madam Mayor. What is the address?
Thirty-four sixty-four.
Thirty-four sixty-five, do you want the PID?
Nope.
No, just the address.
That would be parcel five in the council packet.
Let's let him just bring it up so he can, yeah. And so that's your request to remove thirty-four sixty-five Tuxedo?
Correct.
Okay.
And do you need a written objection out there this evening?
Well, let's see what the council wants to do first, and then, then we can, then you can decide whether you wanna give us an objection or not. So you own two parcels, the other one, give me the other address again is?
Our home is at thirty-five fifteen.
Thirty-five, okay.
Just a hair.
In that one, you're not objecting to?
No, that's our.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, that's on Tuxedo.
All right. We'll bring it up here and then we can have the council.
There's a very short driveway there on Edsel.
The yard is, and there's no access. Tuxedo is out here and this is.
Oh, okay, okay. Yeah.
This is the driveway for the garage.
Madam Mayor?
Yeah.
This is why I was asking the question before, because this parcel is the same situation as the others, so.
It's, again, it's a corner lot, and again, our past practice has been, when it's a corner lot, we use the access for that lot as the ones. So I think they have a valid point?
I believe they do as well.
Okay. So let me ask the council, are you in favor of removing lot, or it's number five at thirty-four sixty-five Tuxedo from the assessment role? Okay, is there a motion to do that then?
So moved.
Okay. Mr. Molliter made the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Shannon, Ms. Bruce made the second. Although, any further questions, discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify with aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes. Have your wish. Thank you. All right. Ms. Hoff, anything?
Counsel, mayor, staff, I'm Nancy Roehner, thirty-seven eighty in Enchanted Lane, and I strongly object to her vote assessment. I do believe it violates statute four twenty-nine. I, I'm writing a letter and probably just gonna read pieces of it at this point, so I'm really nervous.
That's fine, just.
I'm following this packet down at the League of Minnesota City Special Assessment Toolkit. Under the special benefit test, special assessments are presumptively valid if the land receives a special benefit from the improvement. The assessment does not exceed the special benefit measured by the increase in market value due to the improvement. The assessment is uniform as applied to the same class of property in the assessed area. I'll touch on each of these. And some of my facts that I am gonna be saying might be a little off because it sounds like some things changed since the letter that we received, but I.
Okay.
The city of Plymouth has a city ride repave plan. This year, they repaved Streets and Kingswood Neighborhood. Those benefiting property owners were assessed a thousand dollars. They ground up the pavement at both sites similar to this project and repaved the entire roadway with just three lanes and less versus two. They also upgraded the street sewer and replaced curb and gutter as needed. Again, it was a thousand dollar assessment. In two thousand fifteen, the city amounted to our Three Points Boulevard. They completely reconstructed the road as well as upgraded the city water, sanitary sewer, and the street sewer lines. Because the project was so large, it took that city two years to complete all of Three Points. The scope of the, oops, we own property on Three Points Boulevard, and as a benefiting property owner, we were assessed twenty-two hundred and seventy-seven dollars. We own a corner lot. My own's assessment policy is you are assessed half value when you're on a corner lot. So if we had only frontage on Three Points, we would have been assessed forty-five fifty-five. Again, much larger project, much less money. I realize it was two years ago, but statute four twenty-nine states that all like benefiting properties be assessed likely or equally. From what I understand, this project contains work for the boat launch, the park, and something called the Enchanted Access Road.
Those are not part of, the residents aren't paying for that?
Well, it seems to me they are, because when I do the math, it doesn't add up.
Okay, well, you can look at the, there's two, two assessments right there in the assessment role that the city is paying and, and we're paying for the boat launch as well, so.
Well, if I understand correctly, based on the numbers that I was giving, and I don't think they're quite as accurate as what I saw here, because I think here you're saying that it's eight thirty-two, and what I was told originally was eight forty-two.
Right.
It was last week.
Right.
And if I do the math on these three pieces and based on the bid, they were twelve percent of the bid, and if we do twelve percent against the indirect costs, it's almost a hundred thousand dollars. So if you subtract a hundred thousand dollars from eight thirty-two, it's a thing of seven thirty-two. And we are being assessed more than fifty percent of them. And we were told at the council meeting that we would not be assessed over fifty percent. Or I should say, council meeting, the open house last year.
Okay. Do you have a question then? Cause.
I disagree with what you're saying is the cost. So my math says it's about ninety-eight thousand dollars for those three parcels when you add in the indirect costs, twelve percent of the indirect costs.
Paul, do you wanna?
I don't know where she's getting the numbers from. I look at the, the bonding costs, the project costs, and the, the assessable amount that was identified in the preliminary report. In the preliminary report, boat launch wasn't even part of the project, number one. It was Douglas Park. And the shoreline restoration was in, in there, but not as an assessable part of the project. So the, in the project costs as bonded, the city has two parcels that are being assessed the same rate as everyone else. The boat launch is part of the project because it was all bid the same and is part of the bonding, but that doesn't mean they're being assessed for that. And then the Douglas Park, that was being improved again, but these were both public works improvements. The boat launch had some disturbance due to a met council forest main break and the disrepair of that is part of the project. And then Douglas Park was to try to line the park with curb and gutter to better define the edge of the park. And again, that's, again, wasn't included in the initial project. The assessments that we have are identified as that, so you can't take the amounts that the city is going to be assessed, plus these improvement costs. And I don't know how she got to a hundred thousand, I wasn't following that, but.
Well, I can tell you.
Hold on, hold on.
But the percentage we're looking at is forty-eight percent of the project costs is what the assessable amount would be.
Okay, so project costs are the cost of bonding, meaning attorney fees and the, and all of the fees associated with the bonding, the engineering, design, bidding, advertising, all of that, and in addition to the actual construction costs. So all of those costs are added up, and that amounted to eight hundred and thirty-two thousand plus. So the residents, or then the total assessments was four hundred thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. That's less than fifty percent. So you're, you're not correct. You, you were charged less than fifty percent.
So I'm gonna, I'm gonna start doing my dollar amount over again now?
No, I'm just telling you that the fifty percent was taken from the eight hundred and thirty-two thousand. However, it's only four hundred thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. So that's less than fifty percent.
Actually, we're down to probably five hundred and seventy-five thousand.
The, I was given by Paul, said schedule A, which was, I believe, Enchanted Road was two hundred and forty thousand seven seventy-one. The access road was nineteen thousand seven hundred and sixty-two. Tuxedo Road was two hundred and ninety-two thousand six seventy-two. The boat launch was thirteen thousand two twelve. And the park was thirty-six thousand five hundred and ninety-five dollars, basically, for a total of six hundred and three thousand and eleven dollars. That's the project bid work. So when I added up the access road, the park, and the boat launch, that was twelve percent of the bid. So I multiplied the indirect costs, which is your bonding and all that other kinda stuff, and I multiplied that by twelve percent, and that's how I came up with just shy of a hundred thousand.
So indirect costs are about thirty-five percent of the project costs, and that, that's how we budgeted, and that's where the eight hundred and forty thousand originally came from. The cost came in lower at eight hundred and thirty-two thousand because of the bond sale on the competitive market that we're in. So we actually saw a reduction in the cost for the, through the bonds, which actually lowered the cost of the project. The Enchanted Lane access road, there are residents who live off of that, and they're being assessed as well. So they're gaining into the benefit of the project, and it's a project cost that's being assessed. So they are included in the assessment role as part of the project. The boat launch is not, and the park is not.
Where is the Enchanted Lane access road?
If you, David, could you bring that map back up?
So it's giving us the pump station?
It's, it's, get down there. It doesn't, it's called Enchanted Lane, so it's this little piece right here.
Oh, okay.
And that is a publicly owned and maintained roadway.
And they're being assessed as well, yeah.
The city plows it?
Correct.
It looks like a private driveway. I, I've been out there, believe me, but.
I've never seen the city plow it.
They plow it. Our public works director would tell you exactly they do plow it, and they maintain it.
And they're being assessed, so.
And they're being assessed for it.
Okay, so that takes that, whatever, the nineteen thousand and whatever. So it kinda changes the math a little bit?
Yeah.
But I still think it's a little higher than, whatever, about thirty thousand dollars if you're taking off the top to go less than fifty percent.
Okay, all right. So, did you, did you have a letter you wanted to submit?
I do, but I also have more to say.
Okay, can, all right, I'll give you another five minutes, okay?
Okay. So again, my numbers are somewhat off because the numbers that I was given originally, and obviously the indirect costs have gone down ten thousand dollars. But, so the indirect costs are now two hundred and twenty-nine four. So it's a little less than forty percent of the bid cost, and that feels pretty excessive to me. And I know he states it based on the overall costs, but if you look at the actual work that's being done compared to the overhead, it seems high to me. And then lastly, I, it's my understanding that the property of adding either Enchanted or Tuxedo will all be assessed the same amount of money. And there's a big variety of properties on these two roads. The least expensive property that I found on the assessment rules for two thousand seventeen was ten thousand dollars.
Are assessed, yeah.
The most expensive one is three point eight. And you're assessing them across the board, the same amount of money, and how can you provide a feasibility study that says that all of our values are gonna go up? The same amount of money. And I've not seen a feasibility study, but I'm assuming, based on, after reading the toolkit, that the city was supposed to create one that says that it is a feasible amount to actually make our market value go up this much.
Right, we have an assessment policy, and that assessment policy is that we charge every parcel, regardless of size, the same amount. And there's a number of, number of ways that you can do assessments. You can do it on per foot frontage, you can do it on per parcel. I mean, there's, there's a number of different ways that legally you can do it, and the city has said in the past, we feel the fairest way is simply on a per-unit basis. A council can make that policy change if they so desire, but right now, that's our policy, and that's also was part of our discussion for the Halsted Lane project as well, because there's some very large parcels there that got the same assessment. So it's, it's a difficult decision that the, that a council has to make, but that was a decision that we've made, so.
So the, the poor parcel that's only worth ten thousand dollars is gonna go up to sixteen five?
Doubt that there's a parcel that's worth ten thousand.
There is.
Okay.
So repaving a paved street does not necessarily increase the market value. What somebody is actually willing to pay for it. It's paved today, it'll be paved tomorrow. Will the market value go up next year? Probably, but will it have anything to do with the street? Who knows?
Okay.
And the only last comment I have here is, even the toolkit states, it's very difficult for cities to prove that repaving a paved street actually increases market value. So I think the assessment amount is too large for repaving a paved street.
Okay. Thank you. Then if you wish to object to your, we just need you to give that letter or a letter signed, and if you wanna hand it to the clerk, then.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. We understand your, your concerns, thank you. Anybody else?
Can I ask one more question? I'm so sorry, but you said something about December, January first. Is that when we paid or not paid interest?
That, that is actually when the assessment period begins.
So.
So interest, interest begins to accrue starting the January first.
No, 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 no.
No, 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 that's not. Hold on, that's not correct. I'm gonna let Mr. Beatty tell you the exact dates, that's.
I'm sorry, I misunderstood.
Yeah.
No, and this was all in your letter. You get thirty days after the adoption of the assessment rule, which is presumably tonight, to pay without interest. Then after that, until the city certifies the assessment to the county, which will probably be mid-November, you can pay through that date with interest to that date calculated from tonight. So in other words, you get your thirty days for free, and then interest starts as of tonight if you don't take advantage of that. And then if you don't do, if you don't pay a prepay, then it just becomes a regular assessment that'll be levied every year against your property and paid with your taxes, and the interest will accrue at the rate of four point six percent.
And they can, however, even after that date, they can still, two or three years or four years from now, pay the balance on it?
Sure.
With the accumulated interest?
They can always prepay in full after that, yes.
Okay. So it's, if you wanna pay no interest, it would have to then occur November, by or before November second? Because it's October, and we have thirty, do we have thirty or thirty-one days in this month?
Thirty-one.
So thirty, thirty-one? So it would be November first? Okay, so November first, you'd have to have your check into city hall, and I don't know what day that is. Is that a?
As a city, we do go out and send out a post-assessment adoption letter just to spell those items out for people and the date to which.
Okay.
Yes, when the thirty days ends.
Thank you. So just for you folks tonight, so November first, if that's a workday, I don't know.
I think it's a Tuesday.
All right, then you'd have to be here before close. All right, then you'd have to be here before closing, and then if you don't pay that, at that time, you have until the November fifteenth, with interest accrued for those forty-five days or forty-six, or whatever that is. So, next, yes. If you, you have to come to the microphone so we can get it on camera, I'm sorry. We're not trying to be mean, we're just...
Thirty-nine, seventy, Enchanted Lane, West Highland. So in the pack, the letter that we got, we did not receive any of the schedules that you put up on the screen tonight.
Correct, and that needs to be presented tonight.
Yeah, so we don't have any documentation that you showed on your screen, other than the fact of what we're gonna have to pay. That's the only thing we really have in here. So will we get another letter after tonight that spells out all of our options?
The dates, okay.
Essentially, that's what that post-assessment adoption letter does, and it does also include the payment schedule as well.
All right, so will that come to us so we can make decisions and still have the option to pay by November first? Will we get it in a timely fashion?
Shouldn't be out this week.
So that we can see it before the November first deadline?
But we, the last time we did this, we sent it out within two days, so that's our goal, yeah.
So that's, so you should have it, you should have that letter. Today is Tuesday, Wednesday. If they go out Thursday, hopefully you'll have it Friday or Saturday at the latest.
And that'll spell out the options and show us the payment schedules?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay.
That's all I need to know.
Okay, good question. And I think, you know, it's good that you asked that, because I'm sure there's other people that are interested in knowing that, too. So, okay.
Madam Mayor, the reason the letter notifying folks of tonight's hearing couldn't include those dates is because we don't know when the council is gonna adopt the assessment roll. I presume tonight.
Sure.
But you could always continue it, and then, of course, that pushes all those dates back, which is why we do a post-adoption letter. Now, once we know the date, tonight, presumably, then we can lay all those dates out.
Okay, and I'm gonna trust staff that you're gonna do it as soon as possible to give all of you folks as much time as possible, so... Okay, thank you, and anybody else here for the assessment? All right, all right. So I'm going to close the public hearing, and thank you for your comments, thank you for your questions. Even if we disagree, I'm glad you came and voiced your concerns. Thank you very much. With that, I'm gonna take it back to the council, and, have to get my notes out. We're looking for a motion to approve the Enchanted Lane and Tuxedo Road Improvement Assessment Roll, Assessment Roll, and the proposed assessments. And that would be for the ones in our packet minus the four lots that we indicated, one, three, five, and twenty-two.
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, there's been a motion by Ms. Bruce and seconded by Ms. Mortensen to approve the assessment roll for Enchanted Lane and Tuxedo Road projects. I believe it's in the amount of, do you need the amount? Six thousand, four hundred and...
Sixty-three.
Sixty-three dollars and seventy-one. Can we make this anymore?
So it's six thousand, four hundred and sixty-three dollars and seventy-one cents.
Seventy-one cents, thank you. All right. With that, all those, any further question? All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes five oh. Thank you. Well, now we move on. Let's see, I believe that concludes our assessments, and we move on to our business items. We have approve or change order for Halsted Drive project. How many want to not approve this one?
I had to read it twice.
I know. No, who wants to go with this? Paul?
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. In your packet is change order, or work order number one. This is for the Halsted Drive Improvement Project. As the project was designed and permitted, there were some design modifications that needed to occur, and the change order one represents the majority of that. There was a number of, of, there's some pipe changes that had to be made, mainly due through the permitting process, and we also took the Farm Hill Circle portion out of the project. The work order, we do have to send these through MINDOT for their approval, and they concurred with the pricing that the contractor had put on it, and the change order is in the amount, it's a deduction of thirty-four thousand, four dollars and seventy cents. And staff does recommend approval of work order number one. Should I add, the contractor has agreed and has signed the change order?
Okay. Questions?
No question, but just a comment. I remember when we originally went through this with that circle, Mr. Hornby and you putting into the budget that we may have to redo it. The hopes were that we would not, but it's almost impossible to tell until the project takes place, and so I'm very happy to see that this particular segment of this project actually worked out in our favor.
Yeah, I think that we wanted to make sure that pavement for Farm Hill Circle went through a freeze cycle and didn't come apart on us, and after the heavy excavation that occurred, at least in, I think, about half the roadway, and it actually looks very, very good in that area, so...
Great, good job.
And there is a resolution in your packet that would approve work order number one for Halsted Drive Street Improvements Project, and that is City Project zero-one dash sixteen.
So moved. Okay, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, motion has been made and seconded to approve change order number one for Halsted Drive Project. Any further questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes five oh. Next, approve our conditional offer of employment for Wyatt McDonnell for the CSO position.
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the council. The city council is being asked to approve, excuse me, a conditional offer of employment for Wyatt McDonnell as a full-time CSO officer, and I am bringing this on behalf of our Personnel Committee. This hiring opportunity became available when our Community Resource Officer resigned back in April of 2016, and so we are on our third round of efforts in doing this. So as you recall, we had the position reassessed recently with George Demak. We brought in ten applications, which was a significant change from the past. The qualifications were significantly higher than we had seen in the past, so that was very hopeful as well. We ended with ten applications after extending that closing date. We did offer five interviews, one did cancel, which isn't unusual. We had a panel consisting of three staff, and we had four initial interviews on September twenty-second. Mr. McDonnell was the unanimous recommendation for hire from the interview panel. The terms of employment are noted as outlined, but just to summarize his qualifications and background, he does have an associate's degree in law enforcement and is post-eligible. One of our goals with filling this CSO position was ideally to have it possibly in the future, be a front-loading position for a future officer, so that post-eligibility is nice. He does have three years of CSO experience. He completed his skills program on the Dean's List. He has reserve officer experience. He's currently a field training officer. He works in a medical facility right now. He's EMT certified, and then his list of experience was really everything we were looking for. So he has a background with transports, patrol, animal control, administrative work, report preparation, emergency response, ordinance enforcement, dispatch, which isn't something we're necessarily looking for, but is always a bonus. And then he does have additional training in crisis intervention. That's something that we have been focusing on in our police department and all police departments over the last few years, as things have become an issue with mental health more and more so on the road. So he does come to us with quite a developed list of skills that we are hoping will make him a successful team member and be able to hit the ground running. So, the Personnel Committee recommends approval of the conditional offer of employment for Mr. Wyatt McDonnell as a community service officer with the City of Minutrista with an expected start date in the next couple of weeks. He is pending his background. As you're well aware, anyone in our police department has a little bit further background digging that is done, and then pending his substance checks as well. But I'm happy to stand for any questions.
Any questions from Ms. Tabor? Otherwise, we're excited. I know the police department is probably excited to finally get this position filled. It's been, it's been a while, over a year, so we're very excited to get this filled and hopefully back up to par here, so... Any questions? Otherwise, I'm looking for a motion to approve Mr. Daniel McWyatt as our new community service officer.
Wyatt McDonnell?
I...
No, Daniel here. It's a mouthful, I've had to practice it.
I'm, it's too late, it's, I'm tired, okay.
Just in case that matters.
Just in case it matters. All right, sorry about that. So moved by Ms. Bruce, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, motions are made and seconded by Mr. Molitor. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes. So that concludes our business items. We're gonna move on to staff reports. Mr. Peroni?
Yes, Madam Mayor and council, I do have some information to share with you about the upcoming League of Minnesota Cities, and in coordination with Metro Cities, the annual Metro Meeting, they have a series of meetings that they hold throughout the state, and Metro One is scheduled for the twenty-ninth of November. It's an afternoon, basically, it starts at twelve-thirty, they have remarks starting at one. Session itself ends around five o'clock. After that, there's a social hour, cash bar, heavy orders, and adjourn after that. So there is all, and that's a cost of forty-five bucks, so if anybody is interested in attending on the twenty-ninth, I believe that's on Wednesday.
Where is the path?
This is at the Plymouth Crown Plaza, so it's actually very close. I think I was there last year, I believe so. So if you're interested in attending, please let me know, hopefully soon, so we can get you signed up. I do plan on going. They also have a, they're calling it a pre-meeting workshop and lunch, and that's sponsored by the Metro Area Management Association, or BAMA, and they have a ten-thirty a.m., and it also includes lunch for a fee of thirty bucks. It's Strengthening Trust in Communities, a speaker from, extension educator speaker. So I don't think I'm gonna be attending that, but if anybody wants to go, then you can certainly let me know if you would like to, and we'd be happy to pay for the pre-meeting and lunch that goes with it. So there's no lunch with the afternoon session, but if you want lunch there on-site, you can always eat lunch on your own and go to the session, it starts at twelve-thirty, LMCD Metro Meeting, so... So I'm looking for telephone calls or head nods tonight, or whatever, however you'd like.
I think I can go. It's also a good networking opportunity, too, meeting other council members and mayors, so I'm pretty sure I can go.
Okay, it's a good mix of council and staff people from throughout the metro, so...
Yep.
Sounds interesting.
Okay.
I don't think I'll be able to go, but I will let you know for sure.
Okay. Mike and Jan?
I can't.
You cannot? Okay.
I'll have to represent all of you. All right.
Hey, I'm gonna try, too, so... I know what you meant. We have one other item from the engineer, I don't know if anybody here has an item. I guess the only thing, we tentatively are gonna have a planning commission meeting October twenty-third. We do have Parks Commission covered already, so if anyone could attend, Patricia?
I'll take it.
Okay.
Anybody else? Otherwise, we'll let Mr. Hornby give a quick report on the roundabout.
Okay.
This is the Trunk Highway Seven and Kings Point Road Road Roundabout. We were contacted by MINDOT last week. They are considering restriping the roundabout to a single through lane, and this is, this is due to a number of traffic incidents they have in there, and I think from a staff level and public safety, we agree it should be restripped.
I've done a lot of roundabouts, and I can tell you, that one is confusing, so...
So I haven't seen a layout, but I suspect what they'll do is the right-hand lane as you approach will be a right turn only, and then you'll have a through lane that you would go through or left in the roundabout. So that's what I've seen them do on other multilane roundabouts. You know, now I won't be wrong, but that's the...
We'll see what happens.
That's what I've seen them do in others in this kind of a situation. So we did respond back to them and let them know that the staff had no objection to that.
Yeah, we ran it by both myself and Chief Falls and Heathrow Harley, thinks we should change it, so...
Yeah, good, all right.
That's good news.
When are they looking at doing that?
I didn't get a date from them, they're looking for a consensus from the city, so...
I think it's a good idea, it's just not an easy one to maneuver.
They probably also talked to Carver County, they have a county road going to the south, so I didn't see any response from Carver County.
Okay.
No, I have one other.
Okay.
Last week, about nine staff members participated in a rebranding effort by District One Ten. They are, so it's Waconia. They're rebranding, it's a large W, there's five yellow lines traveling through that W, and it represents the five different cities that Waconia serves. So they are putting together a marketing video, and they asked each city to come stand out in front of their sign and do a little District One Ten cheer a few times, and they're gonna put together kind of a loop compilation that just represents and shows each city that they serve, so that, I think there was about nine of us who participated in that last week. So as they launch that, keep an eye out for a familiar sign and some familiar faces.
Did you need the council to be part of that, or...
You know, they gave us really short notice, so we just grabbed kind of who we had locally and went with it.
All right, so the picture you've already taken?
It was, it was like a video.
Okay.
So they had us cheer, so unfortunately, a little short notice, but might have been in your best interest since we were surrounded by bees and all panicked slightly, so...
Hopefully, it wasn't raining.
No, it was not raining. It was, it was very nice out. So, short notice, but at least we were able to represent our city, which was nice.
Good, great, thank you. Staff reports, otherwise, I have just one brief one you all got at your place sunset celebration from the watershed, MCWD, they always have this annual watershed heroes award banquet, and it's November second. What day is that?
Wednesday.
Wednesday. That's a Thursday.
Thursday. Oh, Thursday, because the first is a Wednesday.
So anyway, if anybody is interested in going, let Mike know so he can register us. It's a good, a good thing to go to, again, great networking, and also good to learn some things and to support their efforts. So that's all, that's all I have to report on.
I attended the Planning Commission meeting a week ago today, and we went over the three variances, got tonight's meeting, and that's all there was on the agenda for that meeting.
I attended the WCC meeting on the twenty-eighth, and it was held at the Bethlehem United Methodist Church, and as you all know, Dan Anderson, the developer, he's breaking ground in October.
Of course, so he says, but...
He is looking for, when it does get started, ideas from the city to welcome these new residents into Minutrista, so...
He can come up with the ideas.
I told him, I asked him if he had any ideas, so he said he did, so we will see. They're also looking at new ways to expand membership and effectiveness, possibly merging with Long Lake, which the majority of people did agree with, so that was it.
I attended the LMCD meeting, pretty high agenda, so it was pretty administrative, nothing new, really to report.
Okay, thank you.
And I attended the Pioneer Sarah Creek meeting. Our executive director was out of town, so it was a pretty short meeting, some presentations on some other projects. But I did get a chance to take a private tour with Hub Aquatics, which is a new company that's doing the alum treatment on Fish Lake up in Maple Grove, and got on a private boat, and they were doing a tour for a bunch of residents to let them know what was going on, and Three Rivers Park invited me to come along, but I got there early, so I got a private... Um, but I got there early, so I got a private tour. Got the chance to see the alum boat and the big storage tanks that they store everything in and how they treat it, and, um, it was, it was interesting-
Yeah.
-to be able to ask questions, and it was quite an education.
Good.
That's all.
All right. Then, uh, that concludes our meeting, um, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
He already, he already reported, so... I'm sorry, so moved, um, Ms. Bruce made the motion, is there a second?
I'll second that.
And Ms. Mortenson seconded that, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes five oh, thank you very much.